All right, hello. Today is October 11th, 2022. It is 6:05 PM or 6:02 PM. This is the Public Safety Committee of the East Hampton City Council. President, I myself, and Councilor Salem Derby. Councilman Munier is absent. First on our agenda is approval of minutes. We have minutes from our last meeting. Oh, perfect, hey.
Is this one of the late?
No, no, this is perfect. We have minutes from September 6th, 2022. I took a look at those. They appear to be in order.
Yep.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve those. All right, and I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let me just write some of this stuff down. So... I'll just get a... I'll Clark this as well. While I'm typing here, um... Is there any members of the public who would wish to speak on items not otherwise on the agenda? Seeing none, we can move on. I spoke with Chief Alberti. This would have been a quarter of the report for the Police Department. They did not have anything to report, so we will skip that. I have on the agenda. And next up are the New City Quick Actions. And I see we have Jamie Webb, esteemed Assistant Planner. Is that your proper title?
I don't think esteemed is part of the...
Oh, well, I added that.
Yeah.
That was...
We should work on that.
I would love for that to be the official title, but unfortunately, it's just Assistant Planner.
All right, great. Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So I kind of carved out that piece from the packet. It looks like there's a list of five items and then some kind of a deeper dive into that with a graphic and some street schematics. So before I turn over, any...
I'm excited to learn more about this.
Go ahead.
So thank you so much for meeting with me. This is something that we've been trying to get to. Sort of came out of the New City Planning Study as a way to try to address some of the very small, easy-to-implement things that could make a difference to neighborhood residents. We heard a lot of concerns at the meeting. Some of them didn't really relate to sort of the infrastructure projects that we're doing. They're more like, I guess, how the city does its business in that part of the neighborhood. So it was the planning meetings that this came out of were almost last year, November of 2021. So a few of the items may have been addressed, such as repairing some of the broken streetlights, but the other items on the list were not addressed. We had decided, Planning Department decided to wait till we were submitting the final plan to council to bring these quick items to council as well, rather than dealing with it immediately after that first community meeting. So generally speaking, like you said, there are five items that came out of it. First one, as I already talked about, was there's a number of streetlights. They're not like the... They're not traffic lights. They're just the nighttime lighting around in the area in the...
And actually, quite quickly, do you want to go through? What would you prefer? You'd like to go through the list and then have questions, or can we ask while you go through the list?
It's up to you how you'd like to do it.
Were those... So are the broken meaning like the actual fixtures broken or the lights themselves? In other words, were those replaced with the whole, with the recent Eversource light change?
So I said broken, but I think they're not functioning would probably be a better, you know, sometimes the bulbs... I assume most of them just relate to bulbs that needed to be replaced. And again, you mentioned the Eversource streetlight upgrades that were going on there. So like I said, they may have already been dealt with. Often when residents call DPW to complain about a streetlight, they'll then send a crew to fix it. So this being about a year old, they may have already been addressed, but... And we didn't... Because the meetings happened in the daylights and all of our survey work happened in the daylights, we were really just relying on residents to say that they had a problem. And one that was identified, deeper dive here, was Main Ave was the one that seemed to have a number of, or at least more than one, streetlight that was out of turn.
Go ahead.
So then, um, the other items are more substantive and were part more discussion. And they relate to, really, the rest of them relate to pedestrian vehicular safety issues in that neighborhood. So the, just going in order, there are two locations where it was proposed that people coming through the intersections, flow through the intersections because there aren't stop signs there. I took a look in our city ordinances. We do not have stop signs in the ordinances on those street intersections. So it wasn't as simple as just, oh, the sign came down, DPW can put a new sign up. It would require an amendment to the ordinances, to the traffic rules and orders to add stop signs at those two locations. The locations are Emerald Place and Dartmouth Street and Emerald Place and Lincoln Street. So I did bring a little map here, so this would... So this is Emerald Place, connecting up to Ferry Street this way. Everett Street is down here. This is the Everett... Sorry, the Emerald Place and...
Dartmouth.
Unclear if this is Glencoe or Dartmouth, but it's this little...
Little intersector that goes to...
Yeah, it's a little intersection and it's really wide, very poorly defined. And the proposal is that there be a stop sign somewhere around here. And then again, Emerald Place and Lincoln Street, that there be a stop sign for cars turning onto Emerald.
Just looking at the kind of the angle that Lincoln meets Emerald, I'm just more curious. You know, obviously, I'm not opposed to a full stop sign, but was there any consideration for a yield? Or is it just, was it just seem easier to put a stop sign there?
So I think the recommendation was just for the stop. I don't know if, you know, if in your, or DPW or police, whether it makes sense to, you know, preferable as a yield.
I don't want to complicate things. I just was asking.
I don't know how those decisions are made. I'm not a traffic engineer, so I can't really say. It is an intersection of two, you know, two streets, so typically, you know, even it's, there's an implied stop, even if it's not a signed stop. We are proposing more larger improvements for the neighborhood. So eventually, when Emerald Place and Lincoln Street are reconstructed, there would be some changes to the layout of that intersection. If you recall from the master plan document, there was talk about turning Emerald Place to be one-way. And then there would be more of a continuous path onto Emerald and Lincoln.
Right. The other side would be like a bike pedestrian path, right?
Correct.
And a bridge at the end of it, where it meets Ferry Street.
Right. Emerald would be two-way from Ferry to Lincoln, and there'd be one-way coming up this way.
Oh, interesting.
And that would allow us to put in some parking and the sidewalk and repair, stabilize the slope. There would also be a sheer use path that's being proposed for Lincoln Street. And so that would, all of that's going to require some changes to whatever happens here. So again, it's up to Public Safety Committee, I think, to figure out whether or not that the proposal to put stop signs there makes sense.
Do you have any issues with that?
No, I mean, I think...
Makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense. And especially in the short term. I mean, it seems like there's going to be a lot of action down here, but in the short term, like this is something that we can do right away. It could potentially mitigate some of the danger until all this gets done. And if we have to rethink that later, then that can be done as well. If like the traffic engineer and the police are like, yeah, we probably don't need this here anymore because whatever, so we can... That's, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I agree.
So then...
Then there was the, was it the no parking or is that...
Yeah, so I'm going to skip, we'll skip three and go to four for a second because they're more related. So on Federal Street here, there is a public park here, the Valley Bike Share. There's a school bus stop, and there's a driveway right here leading to this residence. There's no parking on any of this side of Federal Street. And there's, per the city ordinance, there's no parking within 15 feet of an intersection. But this intersection, it's a narrow street, and people regularly park too close to the intersection, both blocking this neighbor's driveway and making that really difficult turn more difficult. So the proposal from the consultant was to either stripe the first 15 feet of Federal Street to show it, or to put in signs that would just say no parking from here to a corner.
Yeah. The striping is generally, well, it's cheaper. So that's something that we've done in other, like when we did Pleasant Street.
Okay.
When we redid the parking, instead of putting signs, we just put striping down on all the places you couldn't park.
Okay.
And that was, I think, pretty easy. So I think DPW probably prefer that option because they can do it in-house and they don't have to order signs here.
Yeah, I agree. It's also just a more obvious visual cue, too.
Yeah.
So people might either not see the sign or not, or just, or see it and kind of not quite like... So I think that's the easy, I agree, that's probably the easiest thing to do. So that would be, that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I agree from a motorist perspective, always kind of figure which way those arrows are actually...
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. Yeah.
From here to where?
Which day of the week?
Exactly.
Odd and even days. That's my favorite.
Oh, yeah.
What? Odd, even days? Didn't know days were numbered.
It's an odd number. Right.
And so then they're requesting, so number three, just to point out, too, we're discussing kind of a campaign, is I trying to think of the right word, to set up more permanent electric speed signs throughout the city. So we're kind of in towards the final phase of that, and I believe that the DPW director is going to make a request for money for that. And so currently, the discussion was mostly about main arteries like Line Street, North Hampton Street, Holyoke Street, Park Street, East Florence Road, like are the ones that just come to mind.
You know the Clark Streets on that?
Well, it's, I mean...
And you talked about...
Up on the short list.
Yeah, I mean, I think eventually, we would start then considering more internal streets, but I think that, I think it would make potential sense to have, I mean, a lot of people have complained about Parsons for a long time. And so I think, I think that that, and if they feel that that and Federal, or certainly at least Parsons, needs a permanent sign, I think it would make the most sense to just lump it all in to, you know, either separately saying, and you just have a permanent sign, or, you know, as part of the global proposal for the first phase of these electrics, of these electric speed signs, so.
That would make sense to me. Obviously, we've got a lot of residents complaining about the speed that people travel on Parsons Street and on Lincoln Street.
Yeah.
I honestly don't know how well these, the cameras, the flashing things work, but it's something.
Yeah.
It's definitely saved me a few times when I hadn't realized that I was going so fast in other cities, not here, East Hampton.
Unless it was on your bike.
Yeah. I was trying to get as fast as I can.
Yeah, exactly.
And so you think both Federal and Parsons probably need those?
Parsons and Lincoln.
Oh, Parsons and Lincoln, I'm sorry.
Lincoln is pretty, I mean, Lincoln would, I would say, probably be lower down on the list. I mean, it is used as a cut-through, but just because of the length of it, you can't really get up to the speed that you can get on other streets that have, you know, do you know what I'm saying? It's like, the Lincoln, until you make that, unless you go straight onto Emerald Place, and, you know, it's like that short stretch, you might be able to get up to 35 or 40, but like, it's not like, you know, coming into town under 10 on Main Street, you know, like where you have a straightaway where you could go 80 miles an hour, you know?
Right.
Where's Lincoln?
Right here.
Oh, there, right. Okay, sorry, I was looking, I was, yeah.
So it's like, it's a relatively short, I mean, it is a cut-through.
It is a major cut-through from people coming from the Mills to...
I mean, and that could be one of the places where we look at...
Speed hump.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too. Yeah, it almost makes more sense to me to talk about speed, physical speed mitigation But, and again, if this was kind of, if we're almost like a year, there's almost like a year lapse in terms of like the sentiment of the city around traffic mitigation that see, I think that the city's a little bit more open now from at least conversations I've had to talking about speed humps. So I would just throw that out there as a possibility. And I also agree with Councilor Derby that the length of the street is pretty short. I think a lot of these speed signs are better for straightaways, but, you know, if you put, if you strategically placed a speed hump somewhere in the middle there, that might be helpful. I would just, just see something to throw out there. Maybe the DPW director, they're looking at temporary speeds, sorry, deploy Eversource speed humps in certain areas. So that would be my only feedback. And I know how much you've talked about speed humps, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're fun.
We'll leave it to, for committee and DPW director to figure out the speed humps or the traffic cameras here.
I would definitely agree with the speed sign on Parsons, obviously.
Yeah. I think that's just, especially if near the playground area, which is, like I said, there's a bus stop there, a school, a school bus stop, and kids kind of hang out in that block.
Eventually, it's going to get a facelift, right? It's going to get more stuff.
Yes. So, and that's...
At least out of the fire member from the plan.
Yeah, so we still need to do our detailed design, more community engagement outreach. Parsons Street is not something that we can address with community development block grant funds because it's considered a, it's not a residential street. It's like a minor street.
Okay.
For your viewpoint, it's still a collector street, and people use it from all over. There might be possibilities to do some minor things like, you know, but that's so far down the road right now.
Right.
There's subsurface sewer work and water line stuff that need to be addressed before we can really start to make a case to any granters that we're going to be putting in. They want their money to not be torn up a few years later, so... But that would, you know, we might be able to do like a raised crosswalk or something like that, or some...
Well, they also have the...
Flashing, rapid fashion beacon or something like that for the crosswalk in this area. But again, that'd be further down the road than I think what this quick action demo was trying to get at. So if, but I also would say that if the speed monitoring sign was somewhere near that park, I think that might be a good location, just given the proximity to the school bus stop.
So Ferry is...
Ferry is up here.
Up there. Okay. Okay, that's streets, okay, the park, I don't know why I thought it was so much closer to Ferry Street. Yeah, well, you would want it to be preceding it in some way, so people would be seeing the sign and slowing down, but like, you don't want them to be at the park. You'd want it to be somewhere before the park, so it would mitigate people's speed as they're approaching.
Yeah, and I think that the concerns of traffic in both directions.
Yeah, so you'd have to think about, so maybe we'd have to, and I agree, that's, yeah, so, um, yeah, I think that would be a matter of talking to the DPW director about if you would allow them at both sides. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then the crossing signs at Ferry and Emerald.
Right, so this is off the map here, but at that, where Emerald Place intersects Ferry Street, it's right past the, where the work stopped for the Mass Works Grant. So we have, I think, three or four crosswalks in short succession, but the crosswalk that goes right at the end of Emerald does not have any sort of warning sign to motorists that they're about to go through a crosswalk.
It's also just two lines. It doesn't have the cross lines either.
Okay.
Because I'm looking at it on the satellite, and at least in this picture, it didn't have it, you know, it almost looks like a homemade crosswalk.
Right. So I mean, so that might be an option as well to have that...
Repainted.
Repainted to our stand, to the ladder.
Yep. And all the other ones are, I mean, it looks like they're raised. Looks like they definitely have brick maybe across, or at least maybe painted red.
One is raised. I think they're all...
Painted red.
Painted.
Yeah.
Where's the closest raised one? I'm just...
It's, it's right at the entrance of Three Ferry Street is the raised one.
Okay.
Because I'm looking at this, because...
It's very raised in one direction and in the other direction, it's kind of flat because of the hill.
Right.
You see?
Oh, I see.
See how it's just painted with two lines?
Yeah.
And so that, the crosswalk immediately farther, is that raised?
This, the one that's raised has two arrows right there.
Oh, I see. Uh-huh. Hmm.
So, and this is on that, it's right on a corner, too. I mean, it's, and I think eventually, this is one that's going to get a pretty significant change eventually, right? Where there's going to be like a pedestrian bridge that goes on the other side.
That's, that's the hope.
Yeah.
We're doing, we got grant funding through the MVP program this year, so look at the design, to sort of shore up the design for Emerald Place, which would include test pits to figure out if we can actually, if, whether or not the embankments...
Put the fucking spur bridge.
Yeah, because right now, or how far that bridge would have to go, because we just don't know any, most of the soils are filled, and they're not great structural soils, so it might be possible that it's easy to do. It might be that we have to have a very long pedestrian bridge in order to get to something that's stable.
Okay.
But if we can make that happen...
It'd be amazing.
It'd be great, because right now, you know, you have to cross Ferry Street twice...
Right.
To get to the bike path from Emerald Place. Or from, or if you're on Parsons Street, you have to cross twice.
So it seems like the, like a repainting and maybe signage.
Would you want to consider a flashing one there, or?
I mean, if we could re, like, when this, when that whole project gets done, if we could repurpose those flashing ones, I mean, and I don't know what kind of funding there is for the flashing ones.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What I'm thinking is like in-house, we could definitely repaint the sign and, you know, put up a pedestrian crossing sign if we have any of those.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a DPW question, I guess.
It's definitely better than it is now. We could always come back to the question if it becomes a, still, if it's still an issue. Okay.
Great.
Is that pretty much it?
Yeah.
That really was some quick actions.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they were pretty easy, straightforward, it's just...
All right, well, then, so what I would, so then, what I would propose then would be, so we'll move to, we'll have to put language together, I'll have to put this together for the next meeting, to, well, if we agree on it, I could just submit it once it's done, right? So we'll put language together to amend the ordinance for the stop signs. We, the ordinance is already written such that the no parking is there, so we just have to talk to DPW about hashing that. That's not something we have to vote on.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
We will, we can talk to DPW about the speed signs on Parsons in both directions and adding that just to, because he's going to put a request into the mayor for those.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, for that, for like, as part of a bigger package for a lot of others, for some other stuff he wants to do.
Well, and even, even if, for that, like, even if we put forward Parsons as a high-level candidate for those, you know, and at least put it in consideration, because, you know, if he's like, oh, there's another street that has seven times the traffic load, and putting two here is going to mean we don't have one here, like, we want to make sure that we're at least flexible and, you know, and figure out maybe is there one way that is seeing more traffic than the other? Like, is it, are people cutting from East Street across to Ferry Street more often?
Right.
Are they going from Ferry Street to East Street more often?
Right. Yeah.
It's also possible that it doesn't need a permanent one. I think there's some, the portable ones that get put out for a few months at a time.
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, with all these permanent ones going in, hopefully it will free up some more of the temporary ones.
Exactly.
So, I mean, you, that's, well, that was, so that's the question. Which, I mean, which one would you prefer to do then?
I think, honestly, I'd want to have a more empirical look at it.
Yeah.
You know, like, talking to Bob, talking to Greg, where are the hotspots? Where are these most needed? You know, we're kind of still in that process of figuring out where they're all going to go. But I think Parsons should be a high-level candidate to see one or two.
Okay.
Given the density of the neighborhood.
Given the density of the neighborhood, and especially near the Federal Street Park. Because there's a bike share station there, so.
All right, so that will, we'll just have a conversation that we can talk about that in our next meeting then for that. But we could definitely, probably then set a public hearing for the stop signs, and then we'll just, we'll just add that to the ordinance.
Yeah, that's easy, that's easy.
And the rest of this is phone calls, basically.
Yep.
Do you want us to do that, or do you want to contact?
Well, so this was the, I mean, I wasn't sure what the process is to get these things moving, so if they're...
Yeah, I could reach out to DPW on items, or unless you...
No, well, I would say that now that these have been brought to our attention, probably a phone call or an email, probably an email, just saying, hey, these, these issues have been brought to attention to us, you know, can you take a look at them and then let us know what the plan of action is?
Yeah.
A, if it's an email, then we have like paper trail to see how things work and then know that we're all doing what we're supposed to be doing.
That sounds good, and I'll just copy you on it. And, yeah, so the only thing that we really need to actually take council action on is those stop signs, and we can, at the next meeting, I'll just set a public hearing for the first November meeting.
Yep. Perfect.
All right.
Thanks so much.
Anything else?
Not for you folks, for this committee, but, you know, other stuff, but still working on that home occupation.
Yeah, well, I'll circle back on that. I appreciate that, yeah, so, I know you're busy.
Sounds good.
Overwhelming.
All right, well, great. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jamie. Okay.
Yeah, so regarding the speed signs, I had kind of, I had sent an email out to Chief and Director about, like, basically those, to start with, just major, the major arteries, which they agreed with, and I think that's what...
Happy night.
Take care.
Thank you. You, too. And that's what I think that he was going to propose for the first, so we start, we start on the main things on the outside and then like move in.
Start moving into some of the more interior.
Yeah.
Because like, it makes sense, like Florence Road makes sense, Route 10 coming into town makes sense.
Yes.
Park Street coming into town... Park Street coming into town makes sense.
Yes. Well, yeah, and I potentially further down Line Street too.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, but that might be less important than Park Street.
Park Street, uh, Park Street isn't main.
Yeah, Park Street after the road ring.
Yeah, because you have the Westfield, that side of, you have Southampton, Westfield coming to East Hampton through that way.
Yeah.
Um, so that's a pretty major one. Um, you know, and then...
Holyoke Street.
Holyoke Street.
Yeah.
I, I think if we look at those, and, you know, it's funny, it's ironic, but, um, you know, North Hamp, that, North Hampton, because this is, no, this is Holyoke Street, right?
That's Holyoke, yeah, yeah.
North Hampton Street, uh, the speed limit's so high, like, nobody speeds.
Yeah.
Everybody goes, everybody goes slower than the speed limit.
Yeah, I guess that's true.
Um, I would, you know, there's, um...
Definitely Florence Road though.
Yeah.
Because I think that's 35.
Yeah, 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 it is.
Um, and then, um, probably somewhere at East Street.
Yeah. East Street does have a couple of spots, um, that probably would encourage people to go kind of, probably, you know what, I think, um, near the Fort Hill turn.
Yeah, around there.
Because that's kind of a straightaway.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
So...
I mean, if you're okay with that, then I would just, I would just tell Greg that. And I think he's putting together a proposal for that, a bunch of other things.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we, if we put our heads together with those guys, we should be able to narrow down depending on how many signs we can get, like, what are the most important ones and the hottest spots.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah.
All right.
Um, so I know that you and Omar already did a lot of work on the, um, ordinance review. I was hoping Dave would be here so I could just kind of get his opinion. I mean, I looked everything over, I totally agree with, with it. I think that, um, let me find that again. So it looks like, just to quickly go through that, I know, I know, we've just got a few more minutes.
Yeah.
So I agree that the, that piece about helmets with kids, like, we probably need to propose something new that, newer, that's more educational. And I was thinking it's a public health issue and maybe some way of like, I don't know, tell me if you think this is too extensive, because I don't know how many, because I doubt there's a ton of kids who are getting actually like...
Nobody's going to accept for it.
Right. So the ones that do, you know, you could kick it over to like, the public health department, have them just follow up to make sure that they're required a helmet and they understand the value of the helmet. I don't know if you think that that's over...
Well, so here, uh, because I had, one of the things I was thinking about was, well, A, you know, riding my bike around in the summer, I see all of these kids from like, you know, toddlers to teenagers not wearing helmets.
Yeah.
So, um, if, it would be great if the health department, I'm not telling them that they have to do this, but I think it would be great if they had like a, a partnership with the police where the police acknowledged kids that were wearing helmets and gave them something, like a Mount Tom's gift card.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And people heard like, hey, not only are the police giving out free helmets, but they're giving out, they're, if you're wearing it, they'll give you a Mount Tom's gift card.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, like a pro-social kind of campaign?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I feel, because at this point, like, I feel like RPD is too busy and is not bothered by stopping kids that are riding without helmets. And at the same time, like, you have kids riding without helmets, not necessarily with their parents and putting their brains at pretty serious risk.
Right.
So it is something that, um, I think merits some, some sort of collaboration, but I don't know how the city council plays into that, you know, like, because we can't say, oh, you have to collaborate to do this thing.
Right. I mean, so we have to rewrite the ordinance or strike it, but we could, so, I mean...
I mean, striking it, I think, is fine just because it's not enforced, you know? But I feel like along with that should be some sort of statement about like the importance. And I think the police already give out helmets. I think they do.
They do?
I think so. And I think that's one of the things that they've done in the past at least is, um, giving out helmets to, and that would be a great, honestly, that would be another great thing is if you have police officers while they're on beat, have a bunch, like, a bunch of helmets in their trunk, and they see some kids riding without helmets, they're like, hey, here's this, and if you, if we see you wearing this, we're, this is where we're going to give you the, you know?
Yeah, I mean, do you think there's any way to rewrite it that still makes it required but that obviously takes the penalty out of it and creates some sort of like educational requirement? Right, because I think like, basically, because if we take it out, it's, basically it's saying like...
Yeah, no, we don't care that it's, uh, it's happening.
Right. They're still, they're still required.
But maybe, and what's, remind me, what's enforcement of that? It's, it's like a hundred dollar fine or...
It might be, yeah.
Fifty dollar fine.
I'd have to look, some, yeah, I could actually, yeah, oh, wait, uh, yeah.
Sometimes they would take the kids' bikes, like, I remember back in the, so, this doesn't happen anymore, but back in the day, they used to kick, take kids' bikes if they were like riding with no helmet, like, with no hands and stuff.
Well, I mean, they still have discretion, basically, to, if they think that they're riding unsafely, I think that they have discretion to do whatever they want, frankly.
Yeah.
Because they're endangering themselves. So here, unregistered vehicles, dogs running at large, tobaccos to minors, East Hampton Bicycle Ordinance, I don't think this is the same thing one though. I thought it was $50, but, oh, wait, uh, hold on, I know where this is. It's, 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 it's a weirdly written ordinance because of, it's section here, uh,